Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the zoning committee public hearing. We are really excited about today's hearing. This is going to be a zoning one-on-one, an opportunity for myself, as well as my colleagues, and welcome council member Michael Stenziano, and residents, to learn about the zoning process and how it goes in the city of Columbus. We are really excited to have staff here from the Department of Building and Zoning Services, as well as the Department of Development, and they are going to present to us and let us know exactly what they do in this process. And either myself or council member Stenziano will ask some questions, and we look forward to go ahead and start with Director Messer. Thank you.
Good afternoon. First, I guess I want to say thank you Chairperson Page and your staff for the opportunity that we have to present today, and for your support of the zoning process overall, and also for your support of the Building and Zoning Services Department in general. I'd like to start out just by giving a very brief description of the Building and Zoning Services Department. I serve as the director of that department. Several members of my team are here, as the zoning area falls under the Building and Zoning Services Department. As it sounds, it's pretty simple. Mostly what we're engaged in revolves around the building process and then the zoning side. So we issue all of the building permits, including building plans, review of all the documents that come in, as well as do all of the inspections around the city. We did over 40,000 inspections last year, or 80,000 inspections last year on 40,000 permits. So it just gives you an idea of the scope of development in our city. The other thing that we do before we get to zoning is we also do site engineering plans. So while we're focused on the building permit side for the actual structure, we also route all of the site engineering plans. So those deal with right-of-way issues, stormwater, all the various city agencies that need to review certain major development projects. We coordinate those reviews. And then finally, we do zoning, which is what we're here to talk about this afternoon. So that's sort of an overview of the Building and Zoning Services Department. We have about 138 employees that work in that department, and we're located up at 757 Carolyn Avenue, which is on the north side of town, up by Morse Road. So zoning, I'm going to give just a few comments, just to hopefully shed some light at a high level of the zoning process and how it fits into what we do in Building and Zoning Services. And then there are a number of other speakers that are going to go into more detail, but hopefully, if I'm lucky, my comments will shed some light and help, you know, make those more specific areas make more sense. So zoning overall is basically land use, what a property can be used for, so the use of the property, and then also the standards that apply to those various uses. So such as parking requirements, or setback standards, or density. So on the one hand, you may have, can it be residential? Can it be commercial? Can it be multifamily? That's the use. And then on the other side, you have, once that use is determined, what are the applicable standards in terms of height, and setback, and density? And those are really two sides of zoning that we are always looking at. The various land uses and those standards that I just described, all are set out in the City of Columbus zoning code. So they're all codified and very detailed in terms of the districts. That's what we call the zoning areas. There's 41 separate zoning uses that a property can be used for, and then all the standards that apply to each one of those. So one thing right up front I want to highlight that's important to know is that the zoning code changes over time. So it's important to understand that we use terms like being a non-conforming use to mean that something is grandfathered. So zoning codes are, when they go into effect, we're mostly looking at property as it changes. So we're not looking retroactively. If your property is zoned and in compliance at the time, then it's allowed to stay that way, regardless of future zoning code changes. So most of the time, most often, what we're looking at are new projects, you know, modifications, changes of use, that type of thing. So at any given time, there's numerous properties around the city that may not comply with today's zoning code as written, but they're grandfathered in. We call those non-conforming, and they're allowed to stay that way up until such time as some change is made to that property. And Chris Persoudi is going to talk a little bit more about the zoning section in our department and after my presentation. But what's important to understand is that zoning code, whenever a property or a proposal is not in compliance with the zoning code, either the use or the standards, a request for a variance or a rezoning can be made. And that's largely what we talk about when we talk about the process that we go through, is those properties where some rezoning is requested, or variance from the standards are requested. What I like to highlight right up front is the difference between the two primary agencies that deal with those issues, and that's City Council and the Board of Zoning Adjustment, or BZA. So when you're talking about the use of a property, which is, you know, as I said, residential, commercial, what the property can be used for, those actions are generally heard by City Council. When you're talking about a variance to the standards, like height, or setback, or density, those are going to be adjudicated by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. And those are the two separate areas. The one exception to that is, when there is a rezoning, or a change in zoning use, City Council can also hear any variances on standards that apply to that rezoning request as well. So there are times when City Council would hear a variance, standard variance, but it would be in conjunction with the property being rezoned. I know that's a little confusing, but hopefully, you know, shed some light on the difference between the two areas. So you have both the Board of Zoning Adjustment and City Council that have a process that leads up to a decision on these exceptions, or changes, or variances. Both involve recommendations from neighborhood area commissions in their process. They also involve recommendations from staff, where we consolidate the input from public utilities, public traffic, and engineering, various sections around the city, and then we would also give a recommendation on those requests to the two bodies. Both have public hearings, both allow for public comments, and then they render a decision. Both processes allow for give-and-take with property owners and stakeholders, and they can involve conditions or limitations in order to approve those changes that are requested. Or either the BZA or City Council could just approve the request as is, or deny the request. So it's a very interactive process that I know several people are going to talk about as we go through today's presentation. Shannon Pine, who's going to speak here in a few moments, she works in our zoning public hearing section, and so that's whole process of zoning at the Board of Zoning Adjustment or at City Council. Shannon is the person in our department who leads those processes. Just a couple more just brief comments, and then I'll be finished. Two other zoning-related functions that I want to highlight beyond what I just mentioned about the variances or exceptions to the code. First, the zoning code also sets out several property uses that require what's called a special permit. Those uses include things like a junkyard, a salvage yard, cemetery, firing range, a whole host of very specific uses. They're all set out in Section 3389. If anyone would be interested in seeing all of those uses, there are many of them. Those uses require, like I said, a special permit. That special permit is granted by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So regardless of whether the zoning is allowed, regardless of whether, where you're locating the property, even if it allows for a cemetery, a firing range, you need no variances, you would still need a special permit. That special permit then involves a hearing, it involves annual inspections, and some standards that may apply. So it's just important to note that outside of the normal zoning variance process, there's still some special uses that require special permission from the BZA. The second other zoning-related function that I briefly want to mention is graphics review. So a subset of the zoning code involves graphics. It's a separate section altogether from all the other use and development standards I mentioned, and it sets out the various standards for signs, and billboards, and rules that apply to those. And just as you have the BZA and City Council dealing with uses and variances to standards for zoning, we also have a graphics commission specially appointed and set up to handle issues related to signs, and billboards, and other graphics. That really is the key function of zoning. Two final points before I hand it off to Chris. First of all, zoning regulations, including the graphics, are not applicable to the downtown district. So a lot of times, we get questions about specifically in the urban downtown central area. The zoning and graphics code, all the rules and regulations don't apply to that area. That area is exempted and is controlled exclusively by the downtown commission, a commission appointed by the mayor, who essentially decides those standards, project by project. So only for the central downtown urban area. And then my final point just deals with what I mentioned earlier about the building department overall, and that is that we have the engineering function where we route various plans to different city agencies, dealing with issues like traffic, and stormwater, and sewer. A lot of times when we're involved in the zoning process, it can be a little confusing sometimes at what point, if there's a proposed project where there's some objections to things like traffic, or stormwater, or how the sewer is going to work, and those type of impacts. That is all handled in a separate review process that happens after zoning. So zoning may be approved, but irrespective of whether zoning is approved, there's still a very complex, you know, involved process where every project that's proposed still has to go through a city agency review to make sure it complies with stormwater manual and other regulations and codes in the city of Columbus. So I just wanted to, you know, throw that out as a point of clarity on where that process works. And Andy Beard is here. He is in charge of that project, that system, and will speak a little bit to that. So with that as an introduction, I'd be happy to answer any questions before we get into a lot of the more detailed areas. And again, I just really appreciate you inviting us all down here to talk about these issues.
Thank you so much, Director Messer. And I would like to welcome President Protem Tyson, as well as Councilmember Mitchell Brown, to our hearing. Just so that everyone knows, every member of Columbus City Council is also a member of the zoning committee, and I thank you all for coming today. Are there any questions for Director Messer? Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Any type of utility, any type of issue that would apply to any development project would go through the engineering process to get approved.
Thank you, Director. We will now move on to zoning 101 and the one-stop shop, which is a term that we hear very frequently across the city. And we have Chief Zoning Official Chris Persoudi with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Again, my name is Chris Persoudi. My title is Chief Zoning Official with the Department of Building and Zoning Services. The zoning office is responsible for the administration of the zoning code. I want to emphasize administration, distinguish that from the enforcement of the zoning code. Interestingly, while we administer the zoning code, the enforcement of the zoning code, as well as the nuisance abatement and housing codes, are handled by the Code Enforcement Division of Department of Development. In the administration of the zoning code, our primary function is the evaluation of development proposals for compliance with the applicable regulations of the zoning code. As Director Messer mentioned, the underlying zoning district on the property determines the permitted uses and the prescribed development standards for how to develop that property. That is matters such as required parking, building height, building location and setbacks, density controls for residential, matters like that, as well as lot area requirements for single-family and other types of districts. We are one of the regulatory agencies that participates in the one-stop-shop that is coordinated by the engineering section in our department and headed up by Mr. Beard. We are, along with agencies from public utilities, public service, recreation and parks, and several others. In our evaluation of development proposals, when it is determined that a proposal does not comply with one or more of the development standards, the applicant is given the opportunity to modify their proposal to comply with the code, or they have the option to seek a variance. That relief can be handled by the Board of Zoning Adjustment or City Council. Primarily, City Council would be involved if a rezoning is required, or a use variance is required. The code does provide that variances to yard, height, setbacks, and parking can be applied to a rezoning or concurrent with a use variance. So that's why some aspects of developments that are variances to development standards that typically go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment are also heard by City Council when there's a use variance or rezoning. The public hearing section of the zoning staff staffs the Development Commission, the Board of Zoning Adjustment, the Graphics Commission, and also handles the rezoning process through to City Council. The Development Commission is an advisory body, and one of their primary roles is to consider, or hold a public hearing to consider rezoning proposals, and ultimately vote on a recommendation that will go to City Council, along with the ordinance. As Director Messer mentioned, the Graphics Commission typically hears variances to development standards, but also has the authority to grant special permits for uses that are specified in Chapter 3389 of the zoning code. In their consideration of special permit uses, they also have the authority to impose conditions on the granting of that permit, to ensure that the proposed use is consistent and compatible with the established development pattern, and also any standards that might be necessary to be put in place in consideration of adjacent uses that may be less intense. The Graphics Commission, of course, who I refer to as the Board of Zoning Adjustment for sign regulations, here's very similar things, but those would be to Article 14 of the zoning code, which consists of about eight or nine chapters that cover sign regulations. That would be the number of signs that are permitted, types of signs, the size, location, and height of signs. The Board of Zoning Adjustment, the Graphics Commission, between them, hear more than 100 cases a year for special permits and variances. Likewise, more than 100, well over 100 rezonings and council variances are heard by City Council each year. So when the proposal, the need for a variance or rezoning typically occurs during a zoning clearance review, usually through the one-stop-shop preliminary site compliance process. When the applicant is advised, or determines that they do want to pursue a variance, that's when they are then forwarded to, or referred to Shannon's section to facilitate their council variance or rezoning process. We have other staff within that section that manage and coordinate the variances to the Boards and the Adjustment and Graphics Commission. So with that, I think it's probably a good point for me to hand this over to Shannon to get into more details about the zoning code and the regulation, as well as the process by which applications do make their way to City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Persoudi?
Good afternoon, councilmembers, and zoning chair Paige, thank you for the opportunity for us to come down. I'm Shannon Pine. I'm the Planning Manager in the Council Activities section of public hearings. The other section is the Board of Zoning Adjustment Graphics Commission section, and that is managed by Dick Makely. I do have a City of Columbus zoning process that I would like to cover with a PowerPoint presentation. It will be the A to Z of the zoning process, A being applications submitted, to Z being the zoning map update. This first slide just kind of describes the various stakeholders involved in the process. We have the applicant, city council, the city departments, the community group, whether it be an area commission, civic association, or architectural review commission. We have the Development Commission for rezoning applications only. We have the general public, we have zoning staff, and then we have the zoning chair of City Council. The rezoning or council variance application is submitted to the Department of Building and Zoning Services by the applicant. We do have a cutoff day, it's generally the first Tuesday of every month. Zoning staff then mails the application to the community group, and posts the application on our active case log, which is accessed on our BZS webpage. The public may participate in the community group's process, and we encourage that the public contact their respective community group to learn about their individual review process. Zoning staff then visits the site, notes the condition of the site and surroundings, and takes pictures, and prepares the application for review by city departments. We do a PowerPoint presentation, and we use basically the same PowerPoint presentation for staff review that ends up going to City Council for final consideration. The timeframe for all three of these steps is about two weeks. City departments and zoning staff review the application. Staff review meetings are conducted the third Thursday of the month. The city departments and zoning staff complete the review. Comments and issues are listed in a results letter forwarded to the applicant. That step takes about a week, from between four and five. The applicant responds to the review and submits any necessary revisions to city departments, the zoning staff, and the community groups. For council variance requests, the final materials are submitted, and the ordinance prep stage begins, forwarded to this presentation at step 12. Number six is really dependent on how quickly the applicant responds to our issues or comments in the staff review result letter. This is where rezoning or variances can be delayed, if a traffic impact study is required, if there's a limitation text desired, those sort of things. So we have a timeframe of approximately four weeks, but most of this step is really applicant-driven. Then we have the community group doing their own review of the application and submitting their recommendation to zoning staff, and this occurs for both rezonings and council variances. For rezonings only, the Development Commission agenda is formulated and posted on the city bulletin and on the city website by zoning staff. Notices are sent to the property owners within 125 feet of the site, two weeks before the Development Commission meets. And as I said, this happens, we're actually doing this tomorrow. We will be setting our May Development Commission agenda and sending the notices for the, I believe it's the May 12 meeting. Zoning staff prepares the staff report, sends the report to the Development Commission and the applicant, and the report is posted on the city website, six days before the At the Development Commission public hearing, the zoning, I'm sorry, the public zoning staff, community group, city departments, and applicant can all provide input at this meeting. Development Commission uses City Council speaking roles. We do not time the speakers, and they don't have to submit speaker slips, but it's generally limited to three proponents, three opponents, and the community group. Zoning staff then sends the results of the Development Commission meeting to the applicant with any additional requirements for the ordinance preparation. We also post the results agenda on our website, and this usually occurs within two business days after the Development Commission hearing. Then the applicant submits any additional items needed for the ordinance preparation. Anything that has a development text or a site plan commitment, we need those items in final form. Sometimes there are items that we requested from staff review that hadn't been submitted yet, so we'll remind the applicant that their legal description needs to be revised and resubmitted, or perhaps their labeled document was incorrect, and we need to fix that before we submit their ordinance to City Council. Once again, number 12 is applicant-driven. We may not hear from an applicant for a month after the Development Commission meeting, or two months after the Development Commission meeting, so that's why sometimes applications are delayed and don't come to City Council immediately. Zoning staff then prepares and submits the ordinance to the Legistar system once we've received everything from the applicant. The drafting and review of the ordinance within our department takes about approximately two weeks. The Monday two weeks before the City Council zoning meeting, the zoning chair will review a matter summary of the proposed rezoning and council variance items, and the zoning chair approves and submits the zoning agenda to the city clerk's office. The proposed zoning ordinances are published in the city bulletin by City Council 10 days before being heard at the City Council meeting. City Council mails notices to property owners within 125 feet of the proposed zoning ordinance site 10 days before the City Council zoning meeting. 12:00 PM on Friday before the City Council meeting is the deadline for submission of any needed amendments or emergency requests for proposed zoning ordinances. If there was a correction needed within the legislation, that maybe the applicant had not put the right number of parking spaces to be varied, for example, we might submit an amendment to correct that. And then the emergency requests are also very commonly submitted at this stage. The zoning meeting is held at 6:30 PM on Mondays. City Council votes on the proposed zoning ordinances. The applicant, zoning staff, city departments, community group, and public may all provide input at this meeting, and speaker slips may be required. And then lastly, the approved zoning ordinances are reflected on the official zoning map of the city of Columbus. Zoning legislation has a 30-day effective period unless waived by emergency legislation, which is usually requested by the applicant. And that concludes the zoning process. Both our rezonings and council variances are placed on the zoning map, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pine. That was great. I have a couple of questions, I don't know if any of my colleagues do. Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Chair Page. Just really quick, is there a place where the public could get the slideshow outside of the presentation today? Is it available on the website? Where can we direct them if they've got questions of the process? Thank you.
It's actually on City Council's zoning docket page, because I, Councilmember Miller, the former zoning chair, created this document, and I just modified it and modernized it a little bit, but it is out there now. But I think it would be great if we could put it on the Building and Zoning Services website as well, so we could probably take care of that.
Thank you. I have a few questions. When would a traffic impact study typically be required?
Typically, it's going to be up to public service to make that determination, and they do have set rules on what requires either an access study, which is where we're looking at the curb cuts to a property, or a full-blown traffic study, which may involve turn lanes, traffic signals, and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. So the traffic study is not required on every single application?
It is not.
My next question, I don't know who would like to answer this, but could you explain why, we get this sometimes, why a property, so they're already doing what they're asking for the rezoning or variance for? So why does a city allow them to come in and apply either for rezoning or a variance when they are already, in a sense, not compliant? Is it?
If I understand your question, you're saying there's a property that is not compliant with the zoning code. And I'm assuming maybe they've been cited by code enforcement, for example, because they're not using the property as indicated by the zoning code. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation, there's a difference between being grandfathered or being non-conforming, because you were in compliance at the time you established the use. Uses or changes after that fact would need to be in compliance with the zoning code, and lots of times, they're not. So lots of times, people do use their property for something that either the zoning code doesn't permit, and they should have came forward and received permission to do that, or gone through one of these processes we outlined, or other times, they might need a special permit for the use that they're using it for, as I mentioned earlier, and they haven't gone through that process. So in those cases, they would be out of compliance. And generally speaking, either on their own, because they want to be in compliance, they could go through the process to get valid legal zoning and so forth established, or code enforcement, if they have been made aware of the violation, may have issued an order. And a lot of times, an applicant is just trying to comply with that order. Does that answer your question?
Yes, Director. Thank you. Are there any more questions? We can now go on to neighborhood plans with Mark Travilis.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Travilis, the Assistant Administrator with the Planning Division. We're part of the Development Department, and I just have a few slides where I'm going to discuss the role of the neighborhood plan in the review of rezonings and variances. As background, and I'm going to speak specifically about neighborhood plans, the Planning Division also staffs the Downtown Commission, Architecture Review Districts, East Franklinton Review Board, and some other commission areas, but I'm speaking specifically about areas outside of those areas where we use adopted neighborhood plans to review rezonings and variances. And the development of neighborhood plans is one of the primary functions of the Development Department Planning Division. We have more than 50 adopted plans that are in place, and these are used, they address land use and urban design, commercial and residential design guidelines, and again, our are used to review rezonings and variances, and all of our adopted plans are on our website, which is shown there. I wanted to talk a little bit about the process, how we develop our neighborhood plans. This is a community-driven process. We develop them in partnership with the community. We generally establish what we call a planning services agreement with the given neighborhood body that establishes an understanding of what we're going to do, what we're not going to do, how long it'll take, and so forth. Generally, the planning process takes one to two years from the beginning until council adoption process, and it involves significant staff analysis of a given area, including existing land use and existing zoning, densities on the ground, and so forth, significant communication with the neighborhood stakeholder interviews. We form a working committee. We do at least three major public meetings. We have a web process, web presence throughout the process. We only bring a plan forward unless if we have community endorsement, so we'll ask the given body for a recommendation, and provided the recommendation, the plan goes to the Development Commission and with their recommendation to city council for adoption. Upon adoption, then, the plan serves as a guide, as a policy guide. And really, the core of any neighborhood plan is the land use plan, which includes a map and associated text. And the map includes a land use recommendation for every parcel that is within the given planning area. So, the image up on the screen is the University District Plan land use recommendation, and the different colors relate to a chart, which indicate what is recommended for that given property. There's usually an associated density recommendation for residential areas that are recommended for residential uses. Also associated with each given land use is a recommended commercial or residential design guidelines. These are not architecture review standards like we might see in Victorian or Italian Village, but they are more general, again, policy recommendations that are used in order to guide what a building should look like. Again, these recommendations are used in order to review rezonings and variances. They don't come into play unless if somebody initiates a rezoning or variance, and that's something that we really need to stress throughout the community process and need to remind folks, because sometimes, people think that a plan is done and that an action will incur immediately, but the plan is indeed reactive and is used to review development. It is just policy, but it does provide a legal basis for comments on rezonings and variances. We see it's a framework. Some folks want the plans to be more stringent, some folks don't want there to be a plan in their neighborhood at all, and we say they fall somewhere in between. They provide a framework for input and review. As we're talking about zoning, folks have the right to rezone or request a variance, and so the plan comes into play when that request is made. Is the request that's being asked of us appropriate or not? And this is the city policy that is used then to guide that request. We stress throughout our planning process of what the plans don't address. It is one tool that is, this is sort of an aside, but this is one tool that is used to help a neighborhood revitalize and develop matters that are outside of land use and design are not addressed in the plans, such as code, safety, or traffic, because these are shorter-term issues that we don't think are appropriate to address in a long-term document, because our neighborhood plans serve neighborhoods for anywhere from five to 10 or more years. And again, the plans do not change existing zoning, but they can serve as a policy basis for follow-up activities, such as the establishment of a commercial zoning overlay. Just briefly about the Planning Division's process as it fits into what was described earlier, is, as Shannon mentioned, Building and Zoning Services distributes rezoning and variance requests to the different departments and divisions, and then, what we do is we assign those different cases to planning staff within our division, and they do a research of what the given plan recommends. They also look at other considerations, such as what is the property actually zoned? What are the adjacent uses? What are densities that are on the ground nearby the site in question, natural resources that might be impacted, and so forth? And they write up a draft review, which is then considered by myself and our administrator, Kevin Wheeler, and we determine then the comments that the Planning Division submits to Building and Zoning Services. Strictly, our comments are reviewed for consistency with the adopt and plan in place, and we're diligent to make sure that our comments have a nexus, are directly related to the request being made. If the plan doesn't address the given issue, then we don't comment, because we don't feel that we have the legal basis for commenting. If the plan does address the matter, then we make sure that we tie our comments as closely as we can to the request, the specific nature of the request. Depending on the nature of the case, as Shannon indicated, there could be follow-up meetings between us and developers, or we talk to community folks, additional review, revised comments, based on revised proposals, and so forth. And then, finally, I just wanted to show one resource of my contact information, and one resource, which is a web map that we have on our site, which is actually the adopted plans, recommended land use for all of our plans are in a web map, where somebody could go to it and do an address search, find their site, in order to see what the plan's land use recommendation is for that given property, and then, there's a link to the plan document itself. So, I'm just plugging our technology here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
President Protem Tyson?
Thank you, Chairwoman Page. First, Mark, I want to say thank you for this presentation. I have certainly been able to attend meetings when you're working on neighborhood plans, and I know that you and your team work really extensively to get community input onto those plans, so just appreciate the work of your team. One question that seems to come to council, and especially around zoning, is that when there is a neighborhood plan, which you're saying it is really a plan, it's a guide, because what sometimes happens here at council is that individuals come down to council and says, "Well, our plan says this," and this individual, this applicant wants to do something, either they give you outside of the plan, and so, can you just really address that again, because I know this is a plan and a guide?
Right. It's one of the toughest things about our job, really, because we go in to a given community, we're currently planning in northwest Columbus, and we'll do as deep analysis on a given piece of property as we can in order to develop a land use recommendation, which then, we work with the community to get them to a comfort level with. But that being said, the day the plan is adopted, all bets are off, if you will. Next day, a condition may change, you know, the adjacent properties may have developed in a different fashion, and the plan as a guide creates a challenge, because it's rare that somebody that will, somebody will propose something that is entirely consistent with what the plan recommends. That being said, oftentimes, the given proposal does have merit that we may deem has, you know, benefit to the community in another way and merits support, and so, it's, there's a lot of fuzziness in our review, and there are some folks that will interpret the plan very strictly and maybe bring their own personal perspective to it. They may not like the flavor of a commercial use. A plan may recommend commercial, and some folks may see the proposed commercial use and not like that particular retailer, for example, but we don't, we're blind to the type of retail, and so, we may catch community resistance from a given proposal, and that's, communities do right, of course, but our interpretation might be commercial is commercial. We will oftentimes see proposals, residential proposals, that are in excess of the recommended density. It's rare that a development wants less density than what is recommended in a plan, and that's usually an opportunity for us to try to influence a project through design, perhaps push back on the density, but at the same time, there could be opportunities where it has merit, but we think that it may be another element of the project needs to be enhanced, such as landscaping and buffering, or something relative to the building design. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair Page.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any other questions? We can now move on to the role of area commissions, and thank you, Kim Stan, for coming, the Neighborhood and Human Services Coordinator.
Hi, thanks for having me. Oops, forgot to turn this on. Thanks for having me. I know you invited me because you wanted me to just keep it real, so Shannon outlined a great logical model from A to Z, and we all know it follows exactly along those lines. Everything gets done in a timely manner. There's never any messiness involved. And after that lie, let me go on with my presentation, because we know there are lots of voices in this, and one of those voices, which I want to talk about, is the voice of the area commission. Back in the 1970s, when I was at Ohio State University as a student, unbeknownst to me as a student, city council was down here establishing the area commissions. And so, 40 years later, here I am, sitting at city council, talking about area commissions, so I didn't know I was going to go this far, but here I am. So, what they did that, because one of the things that city council wanted to do is provide a vehicle for neighborhoods to have a voice with city council. And so, the purpose of an area commission is to act as a liaison. That's between residents and property owners, developers, city staff, city council, and so they are out in the community, acting as a liaison, helping problem solve, and to help their areas that they govern as part of the city to govern and to develop well. So, I want to read a piece out of the chapter 3109, because city council actually established this under the city code, and so, area commissions, it says this about them. It says, "The duties of a commission," and there's various duties, "but one of those, which the area commissioners are charged as an advisory body, is quote, 'meet with applicants for rezoning, special permits," as Director Messer was talking about earlier, "demolition permits or variances regarding property wholly or partly within its commission area, to discuss the proposal, its relationship to the area, and possible modifications.'" And so, the area commissions, and you see a map on the monitor, we now, 40 years later, have 18 different area commissions, and five architectural review commissions, all of whom have geographic boundaries, and within those boundaries, when rezoning takes places or variances take place, demolitions take place, those, all those come before those area commissions, and they review those and then make recommendations to city council and to city staff. What I find is this creates a stage that's both fascinating and challenging, because now you have a variety of voices that are coming. Just imagine you're the developer coming into one of the area commissions. You now not only are dealing with zoning staff or planning staff, but you're also dealing with the neighborhood, people from the neighborhood, and so, everyone has a voice, and I think city council and its wisdom back in the 1970s knew that we needed to have a way to have that voice heard at city council. And yes, people can come as individuals, but I think there's power in what's happened in the area commissions, where they've been given an opportunity to have a voice at city Two, the two things that I thought of as I was thinking about this, one, what we have to do is be sure that there's clear communication and listening that's going on, both between the area commission and the developer, area commission and staff, area commission and city council. So, listening is very important, and then, another thing is that discernment and wisdom is very important in this process, because there are so many opinions and so many ways at looking at things, you know, as Councilmember Tyson brought up, you know, somebody can come in and say, "Oh, this is how I see things should be. It's not in the plan," but then, as Mark pointed out, there's another way of looking at that. And so, I think both listening and discerning are very critical to the work that we're doing. So, I think there was a lot of wisdom involved when city council first established commissions. I think they've come a long way. There's some new ones that have just been established in the last few years, and there are still areas left in the city that aren't governed by an area commission. And so, within the city code, at any point in time, a community group can come to city council and request to be an area commission, and so, that's something that's still ongoing to this day.
Thank you so much, Kim. Are there any questions? I just have one. If a, if an area is not incorporated into an area commission, how do they become involved in the zoning process?
So, well, I'm going to let Shannon can kind of answer this too, but part of that is that I know the zoning staff do work with civic associations and others who've really stepped up and said, "We really want to be involved in what's going on in our area," and so, they will include them in their process. Shannon, you want to add to that?
Absolutely. There's probably at least seven or eight larger civic associations that are standardly recognized, Northwest Civic Association, Northland Community Council, Harrison West, those are just, to name a few. Normally, as part of the instructions for their rezoning and variance applications, we advise the applicant to contact the Neighborhood Services Division to receive any applicable information about who the appropriate community group should be when they're submitting their application to staff. If there's absolutely no civic association, sometimes, there might just be a smaller homeowners' association. We will work with Kim Stan's and his staff and forward the application to his section, and then, he can get it to the neighborhood liaison for that area, and then, the neighborhood liaison can notify any smaller groups that may be out there that we're not aware of.
And if I could just add something? One of the things I failed to say is that every area commission also has a zoning chair and a zoning committee, and so, those are people specifically interested in zoning and rezonings, and so, a developer who's looking to go into that area would contact that zoning chair and then work with that committee.
Thank you, Chair Page. It's not directly responding to your question, but I just wanted to highlight, because it made me think of this as both Shannon and Kim are talking. I'm always impressed with the input that we get from our community members who volunteer and spend their time on these very complicated sort of zoning issues that involve a lot of different moving pieces and parts. I know there's a couple of folks here from some of those groups, and I just wanted to say thank you to them, and thank you more broadly to council and to others who allow them to be involved. It helps all of us do our jobs better, and their involvement is always very much appreciated, and their service is appreciated as well.
Thank you, Director. Are there any more questions or comments from my colleagues? Well, thank you. We will now move on to our speaker slips, and as I call your name, I would ask that you come forward and state your name and any organization that you represent. You will have three minutes, three minutes to offer your public testimony, and we will now begin with Ms. Eileen Neal. Ms. Neal, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chairmember Page, for bringing this forum together. My name is Eileen Neal, and today, I'm advocating for the Allen Crest Acres community and the far south communities within our area. Why are we assembled here today? We are here to determine what we can do together to make a difference in the lives of people and communities on the South Side. Our concerns today will focus on the multiple salvage operations at Refugee Road and Allen Creek Drive, also the landfill at Refugee Road and Bellevue Avenue. I offer today exhibits of those sites, so that we can see what they look like. I don't know where I'm supposed to put these. I prefer to have those back. I'm going to refer to those charts, because it will enlighten us as to what the current conditions are of these operations. Our community has two arteries, and that is, in fact, Refugee Road and Allen Creek. What has happened is the proliferation of these salvage sites have become a major eyesore. That community is served by, for residents, we have have become a major eyesore. That community is served by, for residents, we have Allen Crest Acres, Allen Creek Village, William Creek, and Phil Stone Facility. The companies operating these businesses go unchecked. City code enforcement is not being enforced with diligence and consistency. I refer to the exhibit A that you see. 6/25/15, I had code enforcement go out to two companies to take a look at the facilities. They said that they were not in violation. And I want to read the email that I received regarding these two companies at that intersection. It said, "The former company at 2181 Allen Creek Drive is the auto shredding company, has a site plan that allows no storage of materials." He said, "During the inspection, there was no storage of materials." I show you that today, 2181. If you take a look at it, you can clearly see it is stacked up almost touching the sky. That site has been like that on the north side. If you're coming down Allen Creek, heading south, and you cross the track in front of the refuge plant, you clearly see that. That you cannot say was not there because it has been there. The other issue was the one that really perturbed me. Three minutes are up already?
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Neal. Actually, if you could stay, we will follow up with you after the hearing and get the addresses of the properties that you were discussing, as well as the other issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Mr. Roger Deal. Thank you for coming down to council, Mr. Deal. If you could, again, state your name and any organizations that you represent. You have three minutes.
Yes. I want to thank members of council for being here. My name is Roger Deal. I had a strange accent this morning working in my yard, so I had this little cut. Not currently, but in the past, I have been on the university area commission. I was, in fact, the chairman of zoning. Officially, I represent myself today. The reason I am speaking to you today is because residents of, permanent residents of the university area have been informed, at least by our city attorney's office, that zoning designations of single family are no longer enforceable. This has been some years. The only real case that I have heard cited to support this, the case of East Cleveland, does not even begin to reach that conclusion. And one hesitates to say what else might motivate city attorney's office to take this position. Meanwhile, it is our definite understanding that single family zoning is being enforced in other parts of the city. So, as I put it to you, at some point, the choice is going to be that either it is not enforced anywhere, in which case, the city will face a writ of mandamus to make people do their jobs, or you will face an equal protection suit to make people do the rest of their job. And I think it is just that simple. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Deal, you still have a little over a minute. I want to offer you that time if you still need it.
No, no, if I need it, I will take it. I guess I should pause for, if there are any questions.
Yes, I do have a question. When you say that the single family unit's not being enforced, do you mean if, like, say you call in a complaint and you believe that there are too many people living in a house?
Exactly. Unrelated individuals, not related by marriage or blood.
Okay.
Reasonable definition of family.
Thank you. And so have you called in multiple complaints? And has code enforcement gone out? Kind of what's been your experience?
My experience in the past was that we were informed that per your city attorney's office, they were not to enforce that.
Okay. Well, we will follow up with you after the hearing as well.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Deal. Are there any other questions? Our next speaker is Mr. Terrence Gilchrist. Welcome to council again. Please state your name and any organization that you may represent. And you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairwoman Page, Council President Pro Tem, who just stepped out, Councilmember Brown, named Terrence Gilchrist, just representing interested community member. Would like to learn more about how Columbus approaches the zoning process. The matter which to speak about today is with respect to eco-industrial networks. And this is related to how we can mitigate public health disparities by using sustainability as a way to address separation segregation, which perpetuates disease. Eco-industrial networks is a concept that's been used around the world as a way to convert industrial parks to a symbiosis of industrial corporations, which then use the byproducts of what they produce to share with each other in ways that are sustainable. So one corporation would use a particular byproduct from another corporation, and this would reduce waste. So it could be recycling metal, for instance. There's an issue of health disparities in Columbus, which people are familiar about, in particular infant mortality. As we know, Franklin County has one of the highest rates of black infant mortality. And there is a new air monitor on the south side of Columbus, which is related to some manufacturing zoning uses in that area. And I would like to learn more about how to introduce eco-industrial networks as a recommendation to different neighborhoods and their area commissions in addressing a number of the health disparities that are involved with these manufacturing industrial zoning uses across the city. I have prepared a simple one-page map of these industrial areas, infant mortality in different neighborhoods, and a logic model of what the state of Ohio can achieve if we are able to use sustainability and eco-industrial networks as a way to mitigate public health disease.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist. Again, you have a little over a minute if you would like to utilize the rest of your time.
Yes, but just like to learn the way in which to approach using recommendations for sustainability in Columbus, Ohio, with respect to public health. I found the presentations today to be very enlightening. Going to follow up with some of the people who are here and just like to learn more about how to introduce these kind of concepts.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Gilchrist. Any questions for my colleagues? Well, I encourage you to follow up with the various departments that are here, as well as the Health Department, to figure out how this can be something that we could possibly implement here in Columbus. So thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Wolf. Thank you so much for coming to council, Ms. Wolf. I ask that you state your name and any organizations that you represent. You have three minutes.
Thank you, zoning president Page. My name is Kathleen Wolf. I live at 2482 Billingsley Road in Columbus 43235. No agency to represent, but I live on Billingsley, where on the block there's about 30 homes. And basically, the buyer's people were the applicant for quite about a year or so. Meetings were going on with our so-called area commission, which is the Far Northwest Coalition. But no one from our neighborhoods across from the dealerships were ever notified or invited to any of these small presentations that were given. And it got all the way to where the applicant was at the hearings where council was voting, to where we were supposed to be notified. It was interesting to see your presentation and slides because the 10-day notice was never followed. We're talking about how they actually took just the six homes within 125 feet of the one buyer's dealership to notify. And more than half of those addresses were wrong. And actually, the city staff used the addresses given by the lawyer who would have an interest in our not knowing who was who. And the ones that did get the notice got it the Thursday before the Monday meeting in June. And then the same thing happened for the meeting in July. Also, the content of the notice needs to be looked at because these notices say nothing about why rezoning is happening. But what's really happening is there's a very large green space and a number of trees that are in front of all of these dealerships. And what happened is the Tobin dealership, which is not across from residential homes further down the street, was able to get the Far Northwest Coalition to approve conditionally that they build forward. And that was all approved. And now that building's going forward for the loss of this large green space. But they're not abutting to any homes or across from any homes. And the Northwest Coalition made it very clear in their, in their notification that they approved it conditionally, that it would not be seen as a precedent for the residential ones. Well, the same thing happened. Then now buyers has applied for them to build forward and take away all the green space, except a small setback, which is very small. And it's obvious that all of these dealerships are large donors. Also, their architects, their legal firms, construction companies are involved. And it was going to be approved in both of those hearings, where we were pretty much left out. And it was just myself and Jeanette that came there. But at that time, we're only allowed the three minutes. And the lawyer is the applicant's representative and was able, was then, we were glad, though, that city council voted to postpone it indefinitely to give us time to look through. And we met with Ms. Page. It was great that she wanted to meet with us. And she learned that the notices that we got said practically nothing about what it was. Staff had changed a number of times, so we could call and no one would know who it was. We finally got to the website, and the actual ordinance contained Roberts Road thing, not anything to do with Billingsley. So someone had mistakenly screwed up the paperwork. So we were totally uninformed. So what I'm trying to say, and I have very little time left, is that it seems there are these issues of irregularity that go on in neighborhoods like ours. But when approving something, for one, it applies to all the others. So we have six large dealerships across from 30 homes, but only six homes are considered within 125 feet. So one by one, they can do this and then say, we can do it, we can do it, which is what happened when they got their parking pads. So I think Ms. Page is already looking into these. We met with her two months ago. But I think it's very important to realize that the drawings are nice, but the real, the real experiences that are going on, staff and others are all in their little zone, but they're not following through. And people are left out.
Thank you so much. And thank you for your comments. And we will continue to follow up and look into that as well. Thank you. And our final speaker this evening is Mr. Lamont Evans. If you could please come down and state your name and any organizations that you represent. Thank you, and welcome to council.
Good afternoon. Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Page. First, I'd like to thank Councilmember Page for hosting tonight's public hearing and educating the community on ways that we can help and build and improve our neighborhoods. My name is Lamont Evans, and I represent several organizations. I am the current vice president of Alpha Eta Omega Alumni Chapter of Iota Phi Theta Fraternity Incorporated. I am the founder and current president of the successful bar organization. I'm also a member of the Central Ohio Young Black Democrats Organization. Most importantly for today, public, for today's public hearing, I am representing my neighborhood. I currently reside at 5696 Beechcroft Road, located on the north side of Columbus and three blocks west of the Cleveland Avenue and Dublin-Grahamville Road intersection. As stated on the agenda for today's public hearing, on the subject of neighborhood area commissions, I would like to take the time to voice the concern of myself and others in our neighborhood regarding these area commissions or the lack thereof. First, allow me to say that I believe that local area commissions are a great tool for council to stay connected to our neighborhoods and stay informed about the issues that are important to us. I also believe that they are an excellent way for the individuals in the community to get involved in the process of making our neighborhoods great. I've been able to attend meetings and speak with members from different area commissions, as well as listen to some of the concerns they have in their neighborhoods. I'd like to advise council that we have some of these same concerns in my neighborhood. However, we are not represented by a local area commission according to the city of Columbus's website. My reason for attending today's public hearing was not only just to get more information about the area commissions, but to also get a show of support from council for our neighborhood as we move forward with making a petition to establish our area commission. Any information or ongoing assistance that you may be able to provide to us will be greatly appreciated. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. And I would just ask that you follow up with Mr. Kim Stans after the meeting to discuss your desire to possibly have an area commission. I believe you fall in the Northland area, and that is covered under that association. But please follow up with him as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this concludes our hearing. I would like to thank all of those who came to testify today and for your wonderful presentations. It was very educational, and I appreciate it. And I thank Director Messer and Director Shoney for allowing your staff to prepare these presentations and come participate today. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues who attended, and also thank my staff, Alonda and Sheri, for their work into this, as well as Andrew Dwyer with our Legislative Research Office. And I thank all of you who attended as well. We do have a lot of community leaders, area commission leaders. And I thank you for your support and what you're doing in the zoning process throughout our city to make sure that it's efficient and that we are working with developers and really having a great outlook on our communities. And I also like to thank CTV for your work today. And that concludes our hearing. Have a good evening. Thank you.